Missus, the meeting is live.
Right. Welcome to the February twenty seventh meeting, Raleigh County Commissioners, please stand and join the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Still got a little bit of spring left for this false spring, but yeah, I guess.
Let's see how it goes.
Um, any public comment? That was on the Michigan public.
Well, well, um, I don't have a lot. I went to the intergovernmental luncheon on Monday and Anna, you did a great job in your presentation. It was a good meeting, good food. So then I've had a couple of doctor appointments this week and other things going on personally, so it's all okay.
Now, like I said, Monday afternoon, we had our noon, we had the intergovernmental luncheon, Anna gave a good presentation of evaluations and then R C B D gave a presentation of what their attack will be this year on fake Patty's day. And then Grant Hill, so Grant Hill gave a brief update on the rebuilt feedlot that K State's putting in. And Tuesday afternoon, I attended the G four oh two dims incident class that that basically is an overview of how emergency management system operates. It was, I did the afternoon one and it was full. Every every seat in here was full. I don't know about this evening one, how many people are here? There was, you know, people from K State, Fort Riley, City, it was a good crowd. Wednesday afternoon was a meeting with V H S on the new EMS building. And it is still on schedule. And there have been enough finishes or completions, you can start to see what the rooms really want to look like. It's it's a nice building. And then we also had some modifications to the landscaping plan from the south side we discussed. And that's all I had. We even started.
First, I might have Commissioners need a motion on the fence view order?
Try again?
Yeah, Commissioner, I'll I'll clarify on that. There was just a slight typo on the fifth view order that I needed to correct. Thankfully, it was found before we filed to the register of deeds. So glad to catch that and yeah, everything everything else stays the same, so.
Okay, well, I would make a motion to approve the revised fence view order for Vandal and Jaffe property.
Well, second. Uh, so moved and seconded to approve the fence view, revised fence view order for uh Vandal and Jaffe. All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Please sign.
Next Commissioner need a motion on the bid recommendation or bare construction to supply six inch ditch line for terra heights to get shore stabilization project.
I have a question. You said approving for six inch, but and I remember they, I think they marked that because they're supplying five inch. We need to.
Yeah, K D A G spec allows for either one preference with five inch, but all they have is six inch, so we could use either six.
Okay. And I remember the team like they marked, you know, catch section, they marked it out.
They crossed out. I think that's.
That's what they're making right now is five of it anyway.
So you're going, I can't quite, some of this having green, I think that's the one you want to go with, but on the um we had a difference between twenty eight thousand and forty two four on um one of these.
It's we're.
Or is it the whole thing?
We're gonna pick it up, not deliver it.
Yeah, we're gonna pick it up and not have them.
That's what that sex line was was.
Oh, is that what it was? Okay, so it's the one that's highlighted leaving green.
Yeah.
The twenty four.
Because we'll pick up because we can haul up ourselves.
Okay. Um, well, I would make a motion to approve the staff recommendation for Bayer Construction to supply the five inch looking ditch liner.
No, second. Been moved and seconded to approve the uh five inch dish liner to be or supplying but not delivering by our construction for twenty four thousand eight hundred dollars. All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next Commissioner need a motion to sign the notice to township board cereal malt beverage license for Brits Farm.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to sign the notice to the township board with cereal malt beverage license for Brits Farm at one thousand South Sydney Drive.
No, second. They're moving second to sign the notice to township board for the stroke malt beverage license for Brits Farm. All favor?
Aye.
Chair, please sign. Next Commissioner need a motion to approve the tax rule corrections.
Okay, I would make a motion to approve the tax rule corrections as presented.
Well, second. Moved and seconded to approve the tax rule correction was presented. All favor?
Aye.
Chair, please sign. Thank you. Next Commissioner, I've arrived at any employee action forms, Donovan Huff, new hire volunteer firefighter. Alfonso Wilken Garcia, new hire volunteer firefighter. Oh, please sign.
Well, it's pretty cold.
It was cold. There's no doubt about that.
It's cold aside over.
Any items for county officials lunching Commissioners? We do have the budget discussion, of course, scheduled, and then I think there's one other little topic, was there not?
Yeah.
Oh, Elizabeth want to talk about staffing?
Uh huh, yes, and and we can absolutely, we've been, one of the things that we're doing now is uh bringing this up much earlier, right, to see what people have, and so that was what the result was after department heading out, right? And during my admin time, right, if there's something that you guys had that you wanted to talk about more in depth that you wanted to see as a topic, you could do that too, but I feel like we're double covering it now, so um I think those are the two that we had identified as staff, is budget and.
No, they're talking about what they need to do and budget and the upcoming budget or how they're.
I think it was just general discussion and direction from the board.
Direction.
What the board wanted to just sit down and discuss, you know, kind of what the board's thoughts are.
Yeah.
And and you know, see if there's any, and up to you guys if you want to see if there's any input from the department heads. But I thought it was gonna, the budget part at least, Commission led.
And that's kind of the, that's kind of the intent is we're trying to help, we're trying to help staff. Um, uh, we're trying to, as staff, we're trying to go and think, okay, what can we, what what can we be bringing up to the commission? And we've been doing that before, right? I mean, we've been doing that, but we're just redoubling our efforts to make sure that if there's something that, you know, that we think, oh, commission, we really need some input on, because we don't already kind of know what the policy is, that's what the purpose of the unofficial meetings.
Any changes in the minutes, Commissioners?
I didn't see anything.
Good motion.
Okay, I would make a motion to approve the minutes of the Board of Raleigh County Commissioners from our meeting on February twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty five.
I'll second. Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes in the February twenty fourth meeting, all favor?
Aye.
Oh, tentative agendas, look Commissioners. Any items for next week's press conference? If not, you have a break till Mr. Ellerman at ten o'clock.
Yes, sir. I was gonna say, last week was after the snow, they cleared some of the snow, it was behind one of our trucks, it was a dump truck with a big blade on it going out of Anderson. He wasn't blading because he, you know, it was clear, he was obviously heading, I don't know where he was going to. But there's that string of houses just before you get to Keats, right inside of the road, and they've done a bit trash day. Old trash cans were out there and it'd already been emptied. And he wasn't hitting it, but just that big blade blowing longer. Blowing all those trash cans over as he went by.
That would have been a nice video to have.
It was, it was pretty funny watching it.
I'm glad you didn't say he went over and hit all the mailboxes and the trash.
No, he may have, like I said, he wasn't, he wasn't blading, he was obviously heading somewhere else with that big blade on the front, but the wind was hitting that just little empty trash cans were just tipping and flying.
Well, there was that one video, I think, I was thinking somebody took this this snowplow racing back and forth across the holster. It was really wild, like going fifty mile an hour back and forth. Did you see that? That was really wild. There was that news thing.
Morning, John.
Morning. I ran a few blades, our panel ran a little late last morning, so.
Panel, where you on?
Leadership Manhattan.
Oh, okay.
I've done that panel.
Yeah, we got four of us this morning and I did. It was fun. I got a group of, um, I think high schoolers as part of it too, so.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it's really cool, so.
Really doing interesting, yeah.
Yeah. Anything I need to sign?
No, no, okay. No, the, no, because you didn't make the motion or you're.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. You weren't in the motion.
I can do that? Hmm, I can do that?
You can not, you can not vote on anything you wish to have voted on, Commissioner.
Absolutely beautiful morning outside too, I might add.
It is pretty, it is pretty.
I reckon we get about seventy five beautiful days in the state of Kansas a year, fifty to seventy five. And I like, and you have no idea when they're gonna come.
Yeah, that's.
Right, you have no idea. It could be December or September, right, and it's sixty degrees outside and beautiful.
For Perry, tomorrow's supposed to be one of them.
Really?
Seventy.
Well, we'll get a storm in March. We always get a storm in March.
Oh, yeah, I've remembered several, I've remembered several springs when trees are almost fully leafed out and we just get hammered.
Yeah.
And the trees got to start all over.
I tell you though, I was, I think one of my favorite storm memories from Kansas was I was driving into Flint Hills and everybody had already burnt because it was like early April, and then we got a pretty good sized snow. And it was so beautiful, the white on the black, it was just, it was breathtaking.
Hmm.
It was like, you know, you can't take that stuff for granted. I mean, you just, we're so lucky in this state. It's got its own beauty, but.
It's, it melts pretty quick that time of year.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good thing about it. True believe.
When, what's too long ago, maybe fourteen or fifteen, it snowed the first week of May, but it was still like forty, fifty degrees outside, so it didn't stick, but.
Yeah.
And then the following week it's eight.
Yep.
Fair.
You bet. Um. Uh, yeah, I'll get with them. Thanks, bye. I almost asked it, and good Commissioner Ford's here now on the county officials. Um, on the quarterly ones who had been providing lunch, was that gonna continue or not? And if so, what do you want is the other question?
Steak and lobster.
Have you not heard Red Lobster's not coming?
I know. So Facebook is wrong? When does that ever happen? Well, on a side note, Beefaro has opened fundraiser.
It is, you're kidding me?
No.
No way.
Tell you, it's open a couple days.
Are you trying yet?
No, but it's open, so that's a start.
We'll let you try Beefaro for.
All right, I'll volunteer, okay.
I want a detailed report, including cost analysis.
I didn't think it'd ever open.
And what do you mean steak and lobster?
All these people.
McAllister's is fine, that's cheap. Steak and lobster for all of us, that that's a lot.
No, no, just steak monster for us.
Yeah.
Right, we need to be clear when they say us.
That's right. McAllister's, we can go with that.
Yeah.
At one point in time, they did have a steak and lobster sandwich. It wasn't very good, but yeah, it doesn't sound right. It wasn't very good. And it didn't stay on the menu very long either, ironically.
This isn't the best place for sushi.
But I'm going to a place tomorrow where there is.
Oh, yeah.
I'll always look forward to that.
You, you are going to see one.
I have had an oyster porboi that was really good. There's that like Cajun type place and it's one of my regular stops for lunch when we're there at Legends. It's kind of on the south side.
Jazz.
I like that place. It's really good. I forget what it's called, but.
It's a Pecan's Kitchen.
Is it?
Jazz New Orleans Kitchen?
It's good, it's good. They got all kinds of, and it's pretty close to authentic Cajun food.
Nice. You're ready to, I mean, at you. Two available post meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah. Five minutes, just.
Yeah.
Yeah. I decided to see if we didn't get anything from the um water office.
Yeah.
Yeah. I was saying, I was saying Linderfield. I was, they did, and I was kind of curious to see what that was. Do you know anything about that?
I was.
Linderfield. I have two hundred fifty million dollars for some, some project.
Oh, I don't know.
Yes, from the water office, I didn't look into it.
That was the only thing about showing.
Water. Should I, I don't. They're saying they might have watered, they might have, were they water meters? The city of Riley was doing it was required to to get replace some water meters.
Yeah, we didn't do one of those. We apply for the water meter.
Yeah, I think I think came in there and was talking about that. I guess we can officially say basketball season's over, sure.
We talked about that earlier.
It's mine.
Yeah.
This local officials could face stricter ethics rules than the state lawmakers. They're gonna test the rules on on state, city, there are city and county people and then you on themselves, imagine that.
I know, right? In the name of transparency.
John, it's on Chris McKinley yesterday at our facilities meeting, uh, my son-in-law and daughter are moving closer. He got a job at Northwest College as quarterbacks coach.
Ah, where's that at?
Mary, Maryville, Missouri.
Oh, north of us, St. Joseph, yeah.
Yeah, it's Mary, not Marysville.
Not Mary's, that's why I gotta think when I say Maryville.
Yeah, that's kind of odd off the tongue considering, yeah.
So they will be much closer now.
It's been a real successful program over the years.
Extremely. They take their football and basketball series. That's where Pat Hedges' son played basketball.
Yep. Well, and their coach, that's, where did he go? Oh, he went to their basketball coach.
Drake.
Went to Drake this year and took a bunch of players.
And they are doing horrible Northwest is Northwest.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm, since he left, uh, so he'll be the next one going because their football coach just got back, so. Because they had like two, like six and five seasons or something, that's just not up to Northwest.
I mean, there was national running.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And it used to be Pittsburgh always was, but it's.
No, Pittsburgh was.
Mm-hmm. They kind of fell off too.
Yeah, he'll be quarterback's coach. Well, congratulations.
Yeah, thanks. Two hours and fifty minutes is much more doable than eight hours.
Yeah.
Which I'll probably be doing here in a couple weeks.
I. I will.
He's actually got a report there this weekend. He's driving through and staying the night at our house on Saturday, Logan, yes, and then driving back.
I've seen, because she's the one. She's pretty soon.
Uh, yeah, she's due the end of April, first to May.
Oh, they're moving now, I don't worry.
Well, he is, but insurance and stuff, she's staying there.
Oh, to finish that.
Yeah.
Hmm. Yeah. Rather than trying to switch halfway. Two thirds of the way to. But that's true, they probably need to be there for spring.
Yeah, I wanted to, hey, and that's how they're coaching stuff to you, it's like, can you be here the next day? Like, no. No. And they're getting ready for spring ball and all that stuff.
Spray to that.
I saw it go down.
Fire was gonna turn this one.
I gotta say, I'm maybe a little concerned about lighting the Reagan mansion. I was telling somebody yesterday, I'm like, I mean, we know where pain can drop in the world, you know, TSA like X-rays, every little thing that you have on you, and yet we can't keep planes wrecking into each other anymore? Are we serious? X-rays, every little thing that you have on you, and yet we can't keep planes wrecking into each other anymore. Are we serious? And where's our priorities?
Well. You need to talk to higher ups.
But this has been happening for a while.
Right, you're gone.
Yes.
Sorry.
Good morning, Commissioners, private public works, and my priority right now is elevators.
Those are important in the airport too.
Something else that goes up in the air.
You're spending a lot of money today.
Yeah.
John has no trouble spending money.
I have a little bit of problem spending money, but I have some to spend because you gave me that permission and.
Oh, back on us, though.
Actually, these come in a little bit cheaper than the first round, though. Were just to quote her proposal from them, um. So I had the proposal for elevators in front of you for the three elevators, one at the courthouse, one at Carnegie Building. And the health department. Only one proposal from TK elevator, which is kind of what we expected. TK elevator owns the Dodo brand, or they bought them. Years ago, I I didn't see when they did, but. So those are a TK elevator, um, a lot of those things are proprietary. Their own stuff. Anybody else wanted to work on it would probably have to go through TK to get a part, so. So I don't know, there's nothing. That surprised us in what we were getting from them when we put this together. It pretty much matched what. They said they would do and we asked them to do. Um, how to upgrade these elevators. There is one thing they mentioned in the proposal was. A fifteen thousand dollar deduct on the cost to forego the. Video. Two-way video um in the elevator. It's, it was a, um. It was new code in the state code that was kind of postponed, had a variance for until June of this year. Nobody knows if this will be postponed from or extended for another. Uh, variance or not, I I guess I'm recommending go ahead and put. Them in the elevator for when it becomes code, we have it available. Um, you know, and for the cost, we're gonna save it's probably. Costs us more to put them in later than it would be to do now.
So that's fifteen thousand per elevator.
It said all of. So it was like five thousand for elevators, the way I read.
Okay, okay, good, yeah, okay.
Fifteen thousand, each would be a little bit different.
Yeah. New vehicle, Christie, um, building up there. It's a good way to communicate in times of emergency.
So you can see where that's going, um. They also have some. Sub- subscription deal with elevators that they can monitor. Performance, um, maintenance of issues that go wrong with the elevator. Maybe catch some things going wrong quicker is the idea is what they say, so we'll only see when that happens. The, the. Issue I have some with these contracts. Who is the Johnson Controls and and TK Elevator, they want money up front. Um, in this case, TK is proposing they get most of their money about the time they start the project. And then to be paid the final twenty-five percent after the project's finished, so. Before they'll even start and order parts, they want half of, half of the dollars up front. Um, I don't know. Me don't like it. But when you tell them no, then we're out with. Bad elevators that may it may not work sometime. Or definitely out of code. And we are already having some issues with. The elevator to courthouse. Doors, um, closing too quickly.
Yeah, we noticed that when we took it to her in September.
So which, which one are we gonna start first? It said that one at a time, they aren't gonna all happen.
They won't happen all at once, and the courthouse would be our recommendation to go first. Um, and then probably Carnegie, since they're right here in the area, we pay for the. Staging area, we have that all at, all at one time. Now, I'm hoping as they are working on. They order parts, they are start ordering parts for all of them. And then they can move from one elevator to the other and next as they go through and it won't take. The total amount of time that. They estimated it'll take.
They had, they had like six months per elevator.
Pretty much, it was.
Six months.
Almost twenty-five months at the maximum end of it was.
Yeah.
I don't. And I hope that.
It said weeks, not months.
Weeks.
Might as well just use the stairs then.
It'll lift.
Yeah, there you go.
Employee health program.
Yeah, yeah.
So. Uh, I, I think my hope would be to be finished by summer or so of next year. Have with all three of them.
That, that eighteen, twenty-five weeks, that includes. Ordering material, they're not, they're not gonna be, they're not gonna be shut down.
No, it won't be shut down that long. That's just from the time they start ordering materials before they all arrive, and it was what, um. Four or six weeks for construction for the build-out.
I think, yeah.
I'm sorry, I was gonna how long each shut down.
Yeah, four or five weeks for the, the actual work. And so. I, when we talked to him, very talked to him earlier, they didn't expect them to be done that whole time. And maybe if we had emergencies, we could let somebody up or down, but. They would need a couple of weeks for sure, too. Uninterrupted work.
We don't have. Uh, alternate, um, elevators in any of the buildings, probably.
The health. No.
We only have one per building.
I think the FCRC is the only one that has two elevators, the only building we have that has two.
I'd get done.
Yeah.
Yep. It's not gonna give you any cheaper.
Actually, it did from what we expected, so we better grab it.
Yeah. I'll make the motion to, uh, accept the proposal from TK Elevator. Begin negotiations for the modernization of the courthouse Carnegie and Health Department elevators.
I would second that.
They moved in second as we accepted. Proposal from TK Elevator and begin negotiations. For modernization of courthouse Carnegie and Health Department elevators on favor.
Good, thank you, John.
Thank you, um.
Thank you, Jake. Yeah, I just have a couple of words on this. Um, just so you're all aware, obviously, when we put out this RFP, we've only got one. Interested vendors, so just in future reference with other. Uh, elevator projects, um, it's likely we're gonna try to do this through sole source procurement and not go through this bit process, so. Hopefully, that don't mean things will move a lot quicker, uh, in the future, so I just wanted to bring that up so you all were.
I would just say on that, make sure that we're being open and transparent in that process, even if it is just one. That should alleviate any issue.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No, you're not.
We will be bringing back a contract or agreement with you here. Um, after we do some talking with TK.
Next Commissioner, Mr. Parker at ten ten, just a few seconds.
I would note that when I think of TKO, I think of a technical knockout.
Yeah.
So I hope we don't get into boxing.
Yeah, and you can't really do much about it here.
Door on the doors, sure.
Yeah.
I'm sure nobody's there.
Yeah, I think we seen down like way southwest Kansas that there was like, uh. Did some work out there, way out there, but. Apparently, they were not interested in. Coming out here. But the way I worded the RFP was to allow for anybody to either fit individually out in an elevator or all three or two. However, they wanted to do it, so. There was plenty of flexibility, but no takers.
I think that one of the things I, you guys know how much I enjoy, Ryan Parker County Councilor, um. You guys know how much I enjoy talking about the helpful and positive efforts of staff when they, especially when my. My office staff does a really good job and Jake worked his tail off to take the, to take the elevator RFP and make it so that anybody could. Um, and I mean, in conjunction with John, what's that?
That was true.
Yeah, for to get the result that we had always feared, which is that we haven't want a single source better. Right, but that's not unique to us. There's, this and crap has, um, they have two technicians that are stationed here, that live here. And so I think other people, they look at it and they're like, well, when you put in our mo- people's mobilization cost and having to. Put them up for four to six weeks, we can't compete, you know, and so I think that's why we get sole source. Um, the, in terms of what is, uh, business that I wanted to discuss, nothing major. Um, are to provide the commission an update as to nuisance abatement, um. We have had, uh, several, um, homes, uh, excuse me, several property, the owners of several properties have. Uh, been charged, um, with violations of our code, uh, several, uh, several violations each. Um, and that is the first step towards, um, acting under the new state statute, and so we are moving forward. Hard on that, we've never had to file, um, the, well, we've never filed. Help these types of charges before, so we've been in close consultation with, uh, the district court and also. The Barry's, uh, Kim from the county attorney's office came over and helped walk us through it. Those, as you can imagine, there's a lot of different, when you file something like that, there's a lot of different menus that you select from. There's a whole. Step-by-step process, and thankfully, I was not involved in hardly any of it. Um, and Shannon figured it all out with Kim, so that went well. Probably because I wasn't involved except in the drafting of the documents. I did all that. Um, anything else I can't think of, uh, did you have a question, John? What's up?
This is in real time because I literally just got a text from Senator Sterns. Tax, Senate Tax Committee's in session right now, wants to know some information on SB one oh eight. Authorizing counties to oppose an earnings tax.
To oppose? Oh, to impose?
To impose.
Earnings tax on what?
Just being able to use, I guess, income taxes, another.
We could, that we could have imposed income tax?
That I can.
Nope.
I have a.
That's the direction I'm leaning to.
I've lived in a community that had, um, the only time I've ever lived outside of Kansas and I felt like a traitor. Um, I was, it, it, uh, I lived, uh, right south of the plaza in Kansas City, Missouri. And I've also worked in Kansas City, Missouri, when I lived in Kansas, and the way that their income, they actually have a one percent. Of your earnings, they have a one percent interest in Kansas City, right, that, um. And that's quite hefty, right? So if you're a, you're, if you're an employer, you have to pay it. Or you live there, you have to pay it, right? So it not employer, if you're an employee that works in Kansas City or you have to live. In Kansas City, either one, even if you work on the other side of the state line, they do that, right? I think that the experience that I took from that, and this is just me talking pragmatically and personally, right? Every five years, they take it back to the voters. To see if the voters approve it, right? It was a decision that was done by voter approval. And it's not something that a governing body, I'm not familiar with one oh eight, but that would be something that. It would, I would str- you know, I don't know how one oh eight structured, but.
I was gonna read it, but it's seven and a half pages long, so we're not gonna do that.
It, I seen it work with when it's, it, but it is a mature community decision. It's not one that you do need your. Right, and it's literally, it comes, it came down in Kansas City every year, there's a ton of community engagement. And it comes down to how do people want to be taxed, right? They have lower property taxes, much lower in Kansas City, Missouri, because they have that additional revenue stream, right? So they have. You know, people, we've been talking about tax relief, right? That's one, that's probably the main way that Kansas City does that, and they view it as more. They're a little different than we are, because there's so many huge employers that are in Kansas City, Missouri. The reason why they put theirs in, I mean, now I'm just commenting, right, but the reason why they put theirs in was. In the seventies and eighties, as everybody moved to the suburbs, they're like, we're having to pay for all of our infrastructure to support these huge employers. And nobody lives here, so we don't have a property tax base. How are they gonna do? This is not fair, and so that's why they put theirs in to try to make things more equitable. I've also seen it happen in Minneapolis, right? But it seems like if you're gonna go down that road. I would strongly suggest, no matter what the bill says, that it would need to be voter. Because that's the only way that it, and it has to be something that people look at and say. I mean, I'm not a fiscal guy, that's Rich and Brittany, but I can tell you politically. That the way that that works is you do so much education with the voters and then they make a decision. Maybe I, maybe I wanna see a several hundred dollar reduction in my property taxes, and I'm willing to pay that in my earnings. Right? It's all kind of the same fun, you know?
And I'm not in favor of, but it would count because there's a lot of pot county people, but. In Ryan County.
That's the, I think that's what they.
Try to get, get somebody else to pay instead of us, right? That's the idea.
Well, well, the previous commissions had, I mean, when they're talking about previous revenue sources or other revenue sources. For decades, had talked about a wheels tax, which is the same thing. If they don't live in your community, then they pay the tax. There's, uh, Washington, I think, has that between Washington, Oregon. They have that, a wheels tax, so someone that works in your community pays the tax if they don't live in your community. And they drive into your community to work but live elsewhere.
Rich, I don't know much about wheels tax, you know more about it than I do, but that sounds, it, it's one of those things where if they. There was a book that, and I'm not trying to eat up time that, uh. I'm a local government geek, and there's a book, guy named Glenn Fisher was. One of the leading national experts out of Wichita State on property tax. And he wrote, his book was titled The Worst Tax, question mark, Property Tax. Because it, the question is, is it a progressive tax structure, right? I think that if we were looking today and we were trying to set up the ideal way to fund county government. I'm not certain that we would make it entirely reliant on property tax.
No, I agree with it.
But also, especially because you've got so many people that if you have a mortgage, you know, it's, it's spaced out. But if you don't have a mortgage. Right, I don't know about anybody else.
I'm sorry, but if you don't have the mortgage, you're renting and you're still paying the property tax bill, you're just not writing the check.
Yeah, and it's a big chunk.
Yeah.
And so I think that's why they liked the income tax approach other places, but there's a, this could be a whole drawn out thing. There's people that write about it. All the time, um. Including a guy named, out of Minnesota, and it's like, what is fair? And the answer is. I don't think there is a perfect.
Getting tax on your income that you actually earn, that's not fair, period. That's my opinion.
You know, you know, I, I long ago stopped trying to figure out anything about taxation. Right, that's like, that is beyond me that I know of. I hope that was useful. Commissioner Ford, did you have anything else?
No.
Did you get one from Brad about?
Yes.
Um, county home rule, he was asking, um, if. That, I guess, he said they tried to do it last year, working on. Hearing for county home rule and wanted to know if we would send some testimony for that.
And we, you look back through the archives because we have some written testimony on that, you could just update it and make it easy, if, if in fact we want to do that.
Except in the, the second part, it's a little troublesome, I thought, he said, with some type of property tax lid coming with.
I was assuming that was dealing with the one or two of the appraiser bills. I hadn't had a chance to respond to it.
You know, he said something's coming. It's not good.
But then he just said, a vote in the people to utilize another tax revenue source. So I'm assuming that's what this is, and I just texted him back to see, indeed, that is the case on this. I'm assuming that is the case, it had to be voter approved. Well, that's.
Yeah, I think we did sports, you know, you know.
If, would you, would you like my office to look back at what we've done historically and then send it on behalf of the commission? Or we could, or the board chair, we could prepare, I think it would be maybe most powerful if it came under the board chair's signature. Um, because then it's an official endorsement.
Put something together and bring it Monday.
Okay, we'll do it, we'll do it. And I, I also. Okay, we'll do it. We'll do it. And I I also if if it.
For you all three, I won't be here on Monday, obviously, but if you're doing the board chair, that's that's fine.
If it would be helpful, I mean, county home rule, if there's any realistic shot. I would be happy to go over and testify. I have a large car. Right? We could all ride over together in my SUV and testify and overwhelm the committee and say, at least Riley County is. I mean, I think every county is gonna be in favor of this and and probably.
Every county is not in favor of this.
Really?
I don't either. I've got some 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 of the smaller counties still are tied to cities, believe it or not. And so we've had that battle back and forth, not not every Kansas county is in favor of it. And we've had that discussion at KC, but the overwhelming amount of counties are, so they've been in favor of it. And if we are going to go that route. It would probably be beneficial to get KAC involved in it. And I will talk to Jay Hall and Bruce. Over the weekend on the matter because they're gonna be out in DC too, so.
Okay, that sounds, that sounds great. We'll we'll prepare the written correspondence for. All right, thank you all.
I haven't had a chance to respond to this email, but I'm.
I'm just waiting to see what the wisdom throws at us on tax later or appraisal that or whatever. And that's not gonna do a darn thing.
Yes, it will.
Once again, it will show why I.
Spend our money with staff trying to figure out what the hell it is and how to approach, how to approach them. It's job security, Brittany. Just what you need, right?
Were you on board with the county already the last time Kansas had a property tax lid? I feel like we never learn from history. What's that?
You're supposed to.
Yeah.
Well, the problem with history there is is all the people that did that the first time are now no longer into being, except for handful. So there's nobody to unlearn the lesson that was supposedly learned to begin with.
Because yeah, if their if their main tactic is their freezing values, it shows you they exactly do not understand Kansas taxation.
They do not.
Don't get it.
They will in ten years and they have to go through a reappraisal process, but once again, this group of people won't be there in ten years when that happens.
And then they can, and then the new group of people can blame the old group of people.
Exactly. Now you understand legislative process.
And then there's no. We just sit here and suffer. Sorry.
She's the daughter of Fred Phillips.
I just had a thought for something that we could make our our next, our next year's legislative platform, right? I it would, there's no, there's not a snowball's chance in hell they'd adopt it. But what if we proposed a constitutional amendment that said before you can join the Kansas Legislature, you have to have worked. Or s- worked for or served on a governing body of a local government. Then they'd actually understand.
But here's the problem, there is plenty of them that have and still don't understand because there's still politics involved. But that's a good thought.
Just throw things out there.
I actually think if you could get it on a ballot, I think majority of Kansas would vote for that, actually.
Well, let's see, we are a petition state though.
It has to pass two thirds of both houses.
That's why I stay at the county level. Right? I don't worry about these state level things. I just do my job.
Not interested at all at that level.
You're soon to retire. You can pad that capers, you know, by. It's only ninety days. They're gonna be out ninety days. That's all you gotta spend.
I'm done, I'm done. About ninety minutes. Everyone knows who I am and I know who I am.
That's what I feel like.
Well. My guess is whatever it is they do give, at what time it's gonna happen. Back to your fingers quick because everything's already been to turn around, so everything's in the off that chamber.
Two AM in the morning.
Gotta get a tax to shell bill and it'll just appear out of nowhere, so. That's how then that's how the tax lit happened the last.
And we'll say, Jacob, how'd you miss that? You're the closest one.
Yeah, you are. Why aren't you there instead of here? Come on, what's going on?
I'm doing Elvira.
You could do that from Topeka, that's okay.
I'll be working there in March eleventh. Oh, Mexico.
Cool.
One thing, don't look at that.
What's the deal?
I was young and stupid.
Gosh, you should delete that.
I'm gonna try to Photoshop the actual photo.
That's like campaign material to the other side.
Are you gonna share it with the two of us?
I don't know. Guess I have to now, but.
This is interesting stuff.
He's hanging on my wall currently too. But yeah. It was a work hat.
Can't see the hat.
Not in my prouder moments there. Like I said, I did it in my youth, so I'll just pass it off on that.
So what age was it?
Uh it would have probably been. Almost twenty one.
Oh, that's nine years.
You didn't know me at twenty one. And let's keep it that way. That's before social media and cameras and cell phones.
Thank God.
After my kids got out of high school, just before cell phones started taking over.
My first time actually seeing the camera phone. I was actually on the subway in New York City. That was an interesting moment.
I remember back in the nineties when for a while there were cars you could get a. Send back phones so they had some, they were making them into the console.
I remember.
And the guy I worked with said, oh, said, I said, I don't want to phone in my car. He goes, oh. Within ten years, every car will come equipped with a with a. Wanted to go back to my. How did that prediction work? Yeah, now you got one in your pocket.
I rented your car. Remember, we rented a minivan one year to go up to Kansas City. And it had the that whole setup on there, the antenna and uh we're all trying to make calls from it because we just wanted to see how it worked.
Yeah, we had you had to find a payphone. Back when I was, find a payphone and throw your money in it. Sometimes it works, sometimes.
That's always been the case with those.
Ready for Vivian, Commissioner?
I'll say Vivian.
No, well, now I'm thinking about payphones and when you see the movies of people using those big cell phones or the tiny little cell phones.
I just remember Zack Morrison saying by the bell with his big old cellphone.
Well, we're gonna talk about technology, so this is a nice little segue and hopefully something that at least I think is a positive and affordable solution. Going forward, so to to give you a little bit bit of background, we've talked a couple times briefly about the um. ADA Act as it applies to websites. So um ADA, we're all familiar, it requires that state and local governments provide individuals with disabilities. With effective communication, reasonable modi- modifications and equal opportunities to participate in government services, programs and activities. And now a lot of what we do is available online. People can go on our website and complete transactions and do tasks and find information. Um so last year, the Department of Justice created a final rule, updating its regulations for Title II of the Americans with Disabilities Act. We have until April twenty twenty six to comply and make sure that all of the content put online. And make available for the public can be accessible by people um with disabilities, whether that is uh. Visual, hearing, mobility or cognitive impairments. We wanna make sure that they can effectively navigate. And use government websites so they have the same accessibility as everybody else in the public. And there are some things we have to do to make that happen. Now, our content management system that hosts the website. They kind of provide the framework and they have done their part to make sure the framework for our site is ADA compliant. But we have almost four thousand pages of content that we have put on the website. And they have no control over whether our content, the things we type in or upload or post is ADA compliant. So if we were to do that ourselves, staff would have to become familiar enough with the, I've heard people say W CAG. W CAG rules, um WCAG standards. I don't know, those acronyms, that's what we give in the government, all the acronyms. So WCAG, so we'll call it two point one level AA.
K B W C A.
WCAG. I like that a little better, WCAG. We would have to learn enough about the rules that we could interpret and apply them effectively. They're pretty lengthy. Um and then go through page by page, image by image, document by document. And make sure our code and our content was in compliant with those rules by the April twenty twenty six deadline. With that amount of content and the number of pages, it just would not be possible. For current staff to complete that work. So I've been looking for software solutions. Um it's twenty twenty five. There are lots of software solutions for lots of things. They've.
I get an ad form every day in my email.
So um I. The AudioEye software, which is the contract that I'm um bringing before you today. Is also part of Civic Plus. It's a co- a company that they have acquired. Um, one of the best things about uh this company, and I'll show you Gary County contracts with them and I'll show you kind of what the public facing. Sign looks like. Um they comb through all the content, all of those four thousand pages. Flag everything that is not compliant with the uh WCAG rules. And then they fix it. So if a heading doesn't, isn't in the right place. If an image doesn't have alt text, if a screen reader could not effectively navigate that page. Then they they identify it, they fix it, even those. Problems that would require human intervention, intervention, like somebody to go in and physically change it. Their staff will do that and keep it in line with compliance regulations. So it it's kind of a full service. And they do that once, there's, our website will not be down for that amount of time, that initial onboarding, they go through everything we have. Make the changes, um put the public facing toolbar on our site. And then the subscription, every two weeks, they go through the process again. So they make sure that any new content we upload. Is remains current. And the reasons to do this, first, to be in compliance with the rules. Second, because it's the right thing to do, because people with disabilities should have access to government services and information. And then third, for uh to protect us against potential litigation complaints. It will be easy for anybody all over the country to find our content since it is digital. Somebody doesn't have to come here and physically see, okay, we have not provided the right accommodations. It could be a lawyer sitting. In his basement in some other state that can identify that we have problems with our webs- websites and can initiate lawsuits based on that. So. It is in our best interest, I believe, to make these adjustments and it's the right thing to do. And this seems like a very affordable and comprehensive solution for that. So I'm gonna jump over really quick to the Gary County website.
And computers and technology is saving us so much money.
Sarcasm, sarcasm.
One, the bad news is this still doesn't solve our PDF problem. Um still working on that.
The which problem?
This company does not make PDFs online, so that someone with a screen reader or an impairment. Could navigate and access that information. A PDF is almost like a picture of a document, so. We have many thousands of those also present. We have forms that people are supposed to like download and complete and mail back. We have to find a solution for that. There is, of course, another company. This company doesn't hear it. They referred me. The price is high. For the initial investment and then it is ten dollars per page. Of a PDF to get those in compliance. So the first line of defense is gonna be to remove any content that isn't absolutely necessary. And then we have to figure out, better here to figure out how to make PDFs. I did find something encouraging in the rules as I was coming through, that things are that are considered archived and informational only. That we had on the site before April twenty twenty six. They are sort of grandfathered, from what I can tell. I'm still trying to interpret what all of this means. So potentially. All of our meeting packets and minutes that um for commission meetings and and other board meetings. Could live on the site um and not have to be uh brought into compliance. But after April twenty twenty six. Um board packets moving forward will have to comply with these regulations. And I haven't figured out how to do that, especially with. Big plat maps and other things that would be difficult to to bring into ADA compliance. So to be continued on that. But so this is the Gary County website.
They have some really cool pictures on their website.
I've been impressed. And I don't know who who the source of the pictures is, but I would like to find out. So this little uh toolbar right here. You open and it gives you a chance to increase the contrast. To increase the text size, to change spacing, font, kind of do a lot of things to interact with the website to make it easier for somebody to. See, understand and interpret. This is kind of the the public facing bit and then allows you some additional keyboard shortcuts to navigate. If you're someone who can't use a mouse and it's navigating just by keystrokes on a keyboard, it makes that a little bit easier. Um you can report an issue here, um lots of things that you could do as a user. Once AudioEye software is implemented to navigate the site a little bit easier. This highlights where the screen reader is, makes makes text a little more. Easier to see. Changes the animation, font, all these things. So if you clicked on something. It moves, so you can kind of tell where you are. So I only have a very basic understanding of what some of these things do, but someone who was a user. Um and needed these accommodations would then find our content easier to interact with. So all these tools, and this is just kind of in addition to that backend uh. Scan and update that brings all of the content into compliance. So any questions so far?
What, when you're saying we're not compliant, what are we not? I assume some of the stuff is just to be able to enlarge it to read it. Is that some of the, what? What are standards, what are the rules, I guess?
If you think about somebody who's navigating with a keyboard or a screen reader, if we put kind of a whole page of text about how to get a burden from it, say, um you have to be able to tab through content that is organized by headings in a meaningful way. All of the images on the site, so if you um, someone who's visually impaired gets a written description of what that image is. What else? That we've the organization is a big deal, go ahead.
Well, also it said here, does everything have to be?
Closed captioned. Videos have to be closed captioned.
Uh, okay, just videos with everything.
Yeah.
Does everything, if you'll type on it, it'll read it?
Yeah, they would use a screen reader that would read aloud as they, as they tab through. It reads aloud the content and it has to be organized in a way that is kind of compatible with the screen reader so they could find easily which content on the page. And I talk so much with my hands. So if somebody was here, so this menu brings up all this different text. So a screen reader would have to be able to go from tab to tab. And without having to read every line of every text and every menu thing to get to possibly, how do I pay my taxes? Again, I don't fully understand and I can provide you a better briefing of it. But it's, yeah, that's kind of the basic. The HTML code has to fit within parameters that they've established.
I don't know if it's helpful or not, but this is, this is the, this is a prime example of simultaneously what I hate about my profession as well as, as well as something that is really well meaning. But necessarily by its implementation is is labor intensive and time cons- and and difficult. Because if I understand correctly what they're trying to do here, basically Google and the other big providers, they have set up certain ways to help like visually impaired or people with disabilities have access to stuff. So then the feds come up with a regulation that says this is how you do it and it's forever long. Right? And then you got people in my shoes, not in my shoes, I wouldn't have. But then you got attorneys that sit there and they're like, yeah, best efforts aren't enough. We're gonna nitpick everything that you do. And why do they do it? It's not because they care about disabilities, it's because, right, if you sue under yeah, you get class action suit and where the money is, is you rack up attorney's fees. And because of the way the the ADA is written, you get your attorney's fees. And so there are people that make a living by going around and suing people under the ADA. And that's why it's like, and we're, we're big enough and people know we carry insurance that we have targeted. So that's where a lot of this comes from.
To me, in the same way that we've had to make accommodations for door widths and bathroom stalls that are accessible, that when they were first im- implemented, it was costly and difficult and people had to, to figure out what the requirements really were. Though those same principles are just now being applied to the digital space.
Well, the thing you also have to take into consideration though too is we have to serve everybody. Um even those that are impaired, handicapped, so forth. I mean, they deserve the right to have the same governmental service provided to them as as anybody. So I mean, I get it. Um and I understand that it's time consuming and it requires a lot more effort and of course money, but they pay taxes too. They're required to have the same services provided to them in a manner that works.
Absolutely. And Jacob assisted me with the contract review. So we have both kind of that that price quote that we get the first year at a discounting rate with AudioEye and then our, if you'd like to come up.
Yeah, sure. Just briefly on the contracts here, since this is with the same company Civic Plus, we've entered into a contract with them recently. We were able to utilize basically the same language, same contract structure. It's all gonna be the same, just a, a couple differentiations here would be uh seven point four and five in our CPA. Down here just talks about termination for convenience. So um in that uh usually we have it one sided where one party or, yeah, they they misspelled that, so they're gonna have to uh retype that when they decided they wanted to edit it. Um but termination for convenience, uh usually we have it one way where we get to terminate for convenience with six, thirty days written notice. Uh they made that mutual and then added sixty days instead of thirty. Uh the other change that they made that we typically have is here in seven point five is just payment calculation upon termination. Uh this one's a little bit bit more significant in the fact that um any amount owed by contractor will be calculated based solely upon payment of fair value of the services provided, the contractor to the point of termination. Uh which fair value is not subject, uh not the subject of a good faith dispute, which as long as it's a fair value, we can't dispute it. We have to pay for it uh all the way up until the point of termination. Usually we have in their language that allows us to uh basically say, ah, I don't think you actually really provided the services properly uh up until termination, so we're not gonna pay you. Uh or something similar to that effect. Uh their change um essentially allows us or disallows us to do that. Uh but those are the major changes. About that, uh as far as negotiating uh goes with I I I'm pretty sure this is one of the only contractors that were allowed that, you know, is available for us. So negotiating hours a little upside in.
Is it annual renew?
Um, I believe as far as renewal goes, automatic one-year renewal term, yeah, unless sixty days notice provided prior to renewal.
Yeah, thanks for sure.
So when does this start?
I think as soon as we
As soon as we get the contract signed.
Yeah, and then we we notify them and I think it takes them two weeks for the initial, initial like comb through of the site. I'm guessing we have to schedule that based on their availability. We're getting in a little bit early on the process. This is gonna affect every city and county, state and government agency in the country. I've been on a couple like uh seminars through Naco and the ta- the banned takeaway that I kind of wrote involved is that this will change the way we do business. So some of the thing, the processes that we've put online, we're gonna have to rethink. Um in particular, forums like PDF forums that we've uploaded. And those changes are still to come. We have to figure out a better process, but at least this takes care of this huge piece of it.
As a company, we currently do a lot of business with and they're a local company, so.
I would make a motion to approve the contract with AudioEye for website avail- accessibility compliance services at an initial discounted cost of thirty one hundred dollars for the first year and full price annually thereafter.
And move in second to approve the contract with AudioEye for the website accessibility compliance services at a discount rate of thirty one hundred for the first year and full price annually thereafter. All in favor?
Chair, please sign. Next question, Mr. Ellerman is up.
Thank you very much.
Good morning again, John Ellerman, Public Works. And I have in front of you the recommendations or for windows in opening for this building that we opened Monday. Um we had three bidders, uh VHS, Icon and Riley Construction. And the bid tab sheet should be in your packet. The bids from my con were omitted because of the, are disregarded because of the omission of the four AI four three oh five two two twenty twenty, um which then brings down to the next best bidder was VHS Construction. What we need to look at is on if we wanna approve VHS Construction, but then we need to look at the alternate number one for the ballistic windows. Those had consideration for just the first floor through all the offices and this room. The one cons- thing this would do is these windows would be, look totally different or look a lot different than the rest of the windows in the building. There'll be a fixed window, um thicker pane, which is a thicker frame. We had same pretty much shape that'll go in the hole that we have, but the windows are different. They won't open. And they're clear glass, like all the rest of the windows will be clear glass. The options we can do later on would be tint the window hard way or upwards, so whether we would get maybe one way viewing out and uh people seeing in. So that that option for A from VHS was a hundred fifty thousand three hundred and their base bid was six hundred ninety thousand. If you, if the alternate total bid price would be eight hundred forty thousand three hundred.
Sell the building at some point in time, I think, you know, probably somebody that would wanna move in here would want not fixed windows to begin with. You said there's other options we could look at, so.
Well, we could hire a security guard.
Uh I just like the base bit at this point. And I want everything to kind of look consistent and match, so.
Like consensus with the board, no alternate ones?
Yeah.
Yes.
It looks like we need to make a motion. Go ahead.
To approve the
So I'll go ahead and then move uh to approve the base bid for VHS Construction for six hundred ninety thousand dollars uh for windows here at the CP building.
I would second that.
And move in second to approve the base bid for VHS Construction for six hundred ninety thousand. Um all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
So the second half of this, which I will be coming back to you is, um you approve a CIP project of five hundred thousand. And so I will need to come back for additional models. And and this base bit really doesn't include some contingencies or that are not contingencies but extra items. If we go above the unit price cost for plaster repairs and masonry stuff, so I'm not quite sure. Could have probably come in to maybe two hundred, two hundred fifty thousand. Additional request for the project.
Let's just do it now and get it done.
I have to, well, I can still bring you, I'll bring you a
We we have an amended form, we'll have an amended form, or we could fund it out of Public Works.
Yeah.
I don't think you're building as well as the other things.
He was quick on that one, wasn't he?
Not as quick as I thought he might be, but yeah. He usually chews me out behind closed doors.
And I will, I will tell you, um the windows do open.
Yeah, they're just so close.
No, they closed because we had them open the other night for the uh, yeah, the incident command meeting the other night in the evening. It was so hot there, they opened the windows. Man, not to break them and close them. I told Russell, if you broke them, they were coming out of his head.
Wrong one, though, the screen window on the outside might plummet to the ground. Not that we haven't got our money's worth out of them, but.
Probably that they're gonna send them somewhere, is probably what's gonna happen.
No, that's a good thing about.
I didn't say R, I just said A.
Now, these are gonna match the fourth floor then.
That's it, I guess. That's where they were supposed to.
Do we need to make a motion to go above on the CIP or?
We will when we do the CIP amendment form. That'll, that'll take care of all of that. It isn't gonna preclude him from proceeding from right now to go
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you all for your work.
Boy, it's good to get a window thing.
Yeah, it will be.
Gotta figure out where I'm gonna move you.
Oh, well. We can go anywhere.
Put a table and chairs out in the bottom.
Sure, if it's in the summer or the spring.
Spring, yeah, not the summer.
Not the summer, no. We're gonna go, what, start from the top down or, you know?
No, we don't know yet. We won't get windows till about August. And then kind of letting it up to them how they would best wanna progress through it, but I would imagine I I don't know, I wanna guess, but my guess, I would do an empty or this room or the break room.
Before the office.
Into our starting office. And do some of those on that same floor.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's just gonna be the hard part. And then coming back later. I think I'll be coming to you later for repaint. Some of these spaces.
Fixies.
They're not gonna get patch that window. They won't go very far away from that one, though. So I'll have, we'll have to come back through and come with paint.
Nice, nice gray tone, nice.
Morning Barry, John, was there was some plaster patch included in the base bit?
Yeah, I think some of that, but
It's so much
What's the timeframe on it?
Started around the August.
Okay, no, that's perfect.
And they had a hundred thirty five days.
So at the end of the year, okay. We were talking about.
It's based on five days.
So before Christmas.
Like, who let these in first? The ones in winter can be in council's office.
Exactly, yeah, that's right. That makes sense to me. I'm sure that would make, I'm sure that would make Well, we were talking about it because if it starts in August, more than likely EM and Fire will be probably out in their new location and we can just hold up on that till they're
No way, they won't be out by then.
That's what Russell said. Oh.
He has a station is done till the summer and then when we get us, then he's got, I would, almost another year to do the other ones, so.
There's the facilities, man, not Russell.
I was just going off of what I was told.
I'll make Russell homeless.
In that case, it would, yeah.
They just got like
Couple forty nine, this one's that are
And another one that's gonna go up shortly too. We could say University Park's well on its way.
Yeah, well, the Leonard. We we housed EMS.
Well, you gotta remember EMS ambulance isn't done till June, you know, and then they gotta move and then where they can start. Russell's project. And Russell's project isn't really small. It's not like a simple remodel. Pretty good changes to it. It'll be nice when it's done. It'll last a long time.
Now, there was about maybe fifteen of us.
Oh, yeah, I don't know what they have designed for this nightage on that. On Russell's building, she was asking about circle thing to put the Riley County thing on she was talking about.
Well, that would be cool, the old big Riley County logo if it's gonna stay the same, and have lit up at night.
No, I think the committee has made it clear the logo's staying the same.
Just have a little light on solar, light it up at night.
Commissioners ready for Barry?
Okay.
Ray Barry.
Not a lot to report, but I'll report what I do have. Uh we're we're busy, we're not overwhelmed right now, but we're certainly got a lot going on. Um, uh. I've got three trials coming up, starting at the end of, the end of March, uh through April, so I'll. I don't see a lot of me, I hear a lot of from me, I'm gonna go, but I'm sure that won't break anybody's. Hard, uh, but anyway, um. Things otherwise are going fairly well, uh. Always some issues anytime you have an office that you have to deal with and. Uh Brian was kind enough, we were able to bounce some ideas off each other on on Friday and then Saturday morning by email and then. Uh Sunday evening, Brian made himself available, so certainly appreciated uh having the opportunity just to kinda. Go back and forth and 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 discuss some some issues that I think certainly is in the best interest of the of the county that we're able to kind of. Resolve and be on the same page, but uh. Uh otherwise, you know, I think things are are. Fairly well and uh. As always, I appreciate the support I feel like I get from the commission, so that's important. Makes it, I'm not gonna say enjoyable, it's the stuff we deal with, but it does, it makes it that it, you know, you. You do enjoy coming to work, so. In the, in the environment that I have, so I I do thank you for that. And I'll stand for any questions. One of these days, I'm gonna try to come in here and bring some excitement, but it's just not.
No, don't, don't, you're good.
You could have Chandler moved to here.
I'm sure glad that didn't.
You could have hired their assistant county attorney over there.
Stay out of that one. All those things that, uh, you know. Know better than just. Stay away.
Keep it boring.
But nothing else, that's all I have, but certainly appreciate it, thank you.
Why, that, that early letter. Like second quarter.
My daughter got me. Charles never changed her. Administration. She got Jerry's cell inside.
That's good. Seventeen years and then we got. Month after you moved here, I got one from Leamworth County.
Well, and and I got one when I was young. You know, calling from me, I didn't wear my music first time.
Yeah, just moved here, I've been on.
That's an actual, but they won't honor resolution.
You did.
Really? Cause it was, it was introduced as a failed, as a resolution to get it on.
But that kept you on that.
Oh, yeah. You put SB sixteen oh five, it's actually a concurrent resolution.
It's a concurrent resolution.
Yeah, I. I figured it happened. I I kind of interesting note that it's in committee on federal and state affairs instead of local government.
Yeah, that's interesting.
Last time it was in local government.
Is that an exempt committee, though?
Is that why they do it? It is not.
It is not.
It is not. I only ways and means and appropriations, really.
You know, that might be.
The, that. However, if it's one, if it's a resolution that becomes blessed, it would still stay above the line. It's got a couple of different places to go on that.
Would the, would the commission mind if? I did have a question um regarding that, uh regarding the home pool thing.
Yeah.
Do you, do you think that it would be, I would never go and testify. Right, without talking with the commission about something, but I'm also happy to, in addition to our written letter. That the board chair would be signing, I'm happy he travels to Pika and deliver all type of money as well, useful. That's, that's a commission decision and I'd be, you know, you just tell me if if you think it's necessary, I can also call Jay and see if he thinks it would be helpful. I know that the committee's gonna be overwhelmed with what they, you know, every year.
Oh, well, um. Last time out, uh I gave, I think you did too, didn't you, one year, give verbal testimony? I did in nineteen, um, I think there was only two of us. But you're gonna get pushed back from. Livestock Association, prom bureau.
Yeah, they're the big ones.
Um, but they're gonna push against it, so I I would suggest, yeah, but I would also suggest that whatever. Oral testimony you give gives the guise of we're not trying to be intrusive, but. We still need to be able to govern in our, in our own manner, work with those particular groups so they don't feel. Well, that's. Pushed into a corner, you know?
Yes, and 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 that would be probably the primary reason why I would go is to explain that in Kansas. We already have a uniformly applicable state law called the right farm.
Right.
And us having home rule, not only does it not change that. Right, if anything is happening out of a city. That has home rule, that is in violation of that, that is unlawful.
Right.
Right, and so the counties would be, I can tell, I can tell you from Riley County's perspective, as a county councillor, right, and anybody that understands Kansas law. Would be the first to tell you that. I'm not trying to say that they're coming from, they're coming from a great place, like the livestock and and everybody, everything, those, those organizations. Right, but we can't do anything that would harm them any.
Right.
We don't have a, we don't have authority to.
Well, my argument was if anything that would help strengthen the relationship on local levels.
Yeah.
Um because you'd have local be able to have the opportunity to do some things locally outside of that.
That's right.
You know, um, just thinking of a random Thomas County, for instance, you know, their. County Commission could work with their group differently than we would work with ours here, but we would have the opportunity to do that based off of this as long as. We still follow the exceptions that are in place and still follow uniform state statute.
That's right, and the bottom line is anything that comes up that would harm that, right, I mean, that would, and I couldn't foresee it. Right, I mean, I literally could not foresee how something could come up that would do that, but if it did, it would be swiftly addressed in the state legislature, cause we would just. Right, and quite frankly, they're being, you know. It would just, in the next legislative session, there would be a law that was passed that. Can can forbade whatever practice that is. You know, and that's how we deal with city stuff all the time. This is pretty simple. So, that'd be what, I mean, I don't know if, I'd be happy to go and do that, if you guys think it's a good idea.
I'd say let's prepare for that and see what happens. My guess is that this one will probably get pushed to the end of session when they're just. Going through the motions to close out committee would be my guess, but if that it's introduced, it's still gonna stay above the line this year, it's got two years.
Okay.
So if all else fails, it's still. Uh it may chance for committees or something, well, wouldn't this year, it'd be next year, so it didn't turn around.
Yeah.
So it would probably stay in this committee, but I'm trying to remember who's on this committee.
I've been always been baffled when I, cause this is not the first time that I've heard that argument, and I've been baffled where it comes from because I'm.
I think it's just more out of concern, just that, you know, more local governance. Becomes a challenge, you know, I, I'm guessing.
Doesn't make sense, but.
I agree, you know, I don't think people realize how much holy hell all of us would catch. If we did something that adversely affected farming. We would be here on our phones. Like, it would be, I mean, I would plead with you, but not that, I mean, this commission would shoot it down anyway, but I would plead with you to make it stop. Because they would call me.
Well, besides Senator Starnes, actually, I would give a call.
Is there anybody else on that bill besides?
I'll have to go back and look on there. Mike Thompson's the chair. I know Senator Clifford and Senator Gossett. Is also on there. Oh, your question again, sorry.
Well, who else is sponsoring?
Oh, gotcha. I. Looks like just Senator Starnes for the moment.
Hope you can get some more.
I probably should. Senator Clifford was. Former county commissioner of Vinnie County. Probably shouldn't say anything that loud, I probably shouldn't say this out loud, but I'm going to anyway, to stick my foot in my mouth. As somebody that comes from the Sedgwick County area, right, I think people would be shocked at just. If it's not in the suburban periphery. You have a hard time getting Sedgwick, I mean, Sedgwick County is so busy just working on their roads. They've got no interest in me either. Do you know what I mean? They're just kind of live and let live out in the county. It's no different than. Being, if you're in Sedgwick County, it's no different than being. Out near Kiowa, if you get. Three miles outside of.
You get out to Wellington or even further down south like Bell Plain and everything, it's pretty much brutal.
That's my people, I'm from, I'm I'm from between Bell Plain and Wellington.
Okay.
That's my, and I can tell you for a fact that the homestead.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You believe.
It's cause I know a lot of people from there, apparently another one.
I used to, I can't, I, I could not, now everybody's moved in now, but I couldn't. Thirty years ago, I wouldn't have been able to date Mulvaney. Because, like, we were related to half the town. It's just.
Yeah, that'd be a problem.
Yeah.
That would be a problem.
My dad always, my dad always used to say, whoever heard of the green wildcat? Cause they're green, it's the wrong color.
Ew.
Everyone knows they're purple.
How they're purple? That's how they are in the wild.
Actually, they're brown.
Actually, they're not.
A brown's not a good color, a good football color.
Although they used to have one on the sidelines back in the day.
They'd bring them down in in a cage. It's, I'd always felt sorrowful. Yeah. Of course, it wasn't a lot of noise back then either.
Basketball, they brought them in there. Glass cage.
Really?
Plastic, but.
Couldn't hear it, couldn't.
Yeah.
What was it, touchdown, that was the name of it. Cause then there was touchdowns.
Scoring many of those.
There was touchdown two back then. Touchdown two, and then with that. Uh, they had touchdown three, and they kept them at the zoo, so.
I don't know if you got what, how many of them at the alumni center stuffed?
Oh.
They've got some stuffed up there. I think it's in that.
Oh, off to the side there.
Kind of nickel Roger Saint for Saint Gilmore and Gordon up in his office up in the top of the tower. Go up and meet with him a couple times, you walk in there, first time you're not expecting, he's a big avid outdoors. Huge hunter, walk in and there's a bobcat laying down, kind of in prow's position, so when you walk in, you kind of go.
He was character.
Oh, that he was, he was an avid outdoors.
Have you been to their new facilities yet?
That was their, uh, last.
Just in the front office.
Yeah. That's a new building, how they designed it and the views through it are just amazing. Yeah, WTC hosted that business after hours and they got the majority of the third floor now over there, so.
WTC, oh, okay.
I noticed that.
Yeah.
It doesn't on here either.
Yeah, it has not here for a while, but there was. Even the last meeting, it still had. Uh, it's fifteen now.
Morning Commissioners, Evan McMillan, Public Works. As you all know, we are in the process of uh. Replacing the University Park's wastewater treatment facility with a new lagoon. Due to the nature of the EPA's consent order that we received and the escalated timeline. We required a temporary note so we could start the engineering analysis and reporting required. So the initial plan was to pay off the bond with grant funding that was later awarded for the project. Uh. But due to some delays in getting the contracts amended with proper contractual provisions, we're still working with KGH and the federal. Or the feds on getting those dispersions processed, uh with the grants being inaccessible at the time. We are requesting a bar from the general fund to pay back that bond. Once uh the contracts get approved by KGH, we can start dispersing those funds and then pay back the general fund.
Then if I can add real quick, Brittany Phillips Budget and Finance Officer, our policy does state uh that the max amount we loan out is ten thousand dollars with a six percent interest rate. Um so. We're bringing this to you, one, to borrow the money and obviously to exceed policy, because I mean, it's significantly different than.
She was about to bring us good.
This, no, it sounds like something we need to do.
Yeah.
Except, yeah, cause we had a break here, so I had a big rock. And elevators, windows and this, just short of one and a half million dollars for you to do today.
Keep that in mind during budget.
Yeah, okay.
We'll write that every day and we're gonna subtract it out.
We could also make it work.
Well, on this, I I do, but on this delay, is that from the state or the federal government?
Uh, the delay on the contractual provisions, so I'll take the blame on that. Uh, I said over to the councillors a little over a year ago, and I don't think I stressed the importance of getting those processed, I'm sure they had plenty of other work to do. But that was, that was the main delay. The, we've, have we? Those are all done.
Yeah, 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 we.
I was just concerned that we may not get that money with the way things are going.
Yeah, as of right now, if it was a previously awarded grant, everything's still working as expected.
Okay.
So, we can, we hope to have those funds still.
I would make a motion to approve payment of the temporary note. Uh. From the loan from the general fund.
I'll second.
And new and second to approve payment of the temporary note via the loan from the general fund, all in favor?
Thank you.
I have a quick question just to make sure, are you gonna ask for University Park to pay that six percent as policy states?
Yes.
Now, we know how long it's gonna be.
I'm hoping it'll be no more than a month, but uh just with how long it takes to approve contracts. But they have enough capital to pay off any interest for that, for that general fund loan.
Yeah.
Yeah, sounds better.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner.
We have a little bit of time.
Yes.
Yeah, just kind of some more background on that, cause actually both these guys are, know enough that they're not aware of that policy and the procurement procedure. Uh for decades, the board refused to loan any money from the, a general fund from the general taxpayers at all. And then it was implemented eventually, Leon would come in, there's a lot of startup costs for benefit districts to get them started a little earlier, and that's why they. Put it at ten thousand dollars, and so there was. Decades where we wouldn't loan because Riley County Commission's stance was we weren't a bank, and so when they implemented the six percent of the, the ten thousand. You, you of course, don't want them to have to pay it, but at the same time, it's the rest of the taxpayers. Subsidizing that cost, and that's why it's to pay the rest of the taxpayers back for the use of that money, but yeah, that's a. That's extremely uh a large amount higher than the ten thousand dollar limit, and so just for your understanding. There was no intention of this happening. But this project from the beginning is done, was gone. Out of any procedure we would have underdone. We would have had money set up and ready before we even went through the temporary. But with the EPA involved. And their consent order of the rush to start something and do something. We kind of went about this a little bit backwards. Then, but we would have liked each property, right, we have. Funding available and working on. USDA funding there before we really take that. Big loan temporary finance like we did. And Evan won't do this.
And ever won't do this. I won't do it again.
Yeah, Leon, Leon was not a fan of, as a matter of fact, Leon, when he first got in, he said, we will not have any more benefit districts, and he ate those words.
That was one of the big deterrents of wanting to come here. I, I mean, that was their consideration, it went from three to nine. Definitely not a. Step in the right direction for him.
They are, there are a lot of work, we, staff spends a tremendous amount of work on behalf of benefit districts, just just think of Keats alone.
And this will be the third one, since actually fourth one that's been worked on since I've been here.
Duh, when we just, the amount of time we had to spend on University Park when we totally redid the current system. Before both of you were here, oh my gosh, the amount of time we put on.
We finished Fairmont Park, and Keats had been going on since I've been here, this is new and the, uh. Ladies, hi. Go along for quite a while.
And so the commission knows, and of course, we don't charge those benefit districts for our staff time involved, you know, and so, but we do their office, our office, their office.
I think I should think about that.
And on an amount of time on those things.
At least the pace fee, maybe not out. I actually, it is extraordinarily timely that this came up, right? There is a, um, uh, uh, up in Peterson Ranch, there's Mr. Blacka. Has been, uh. Right, well, they're, they're wanting to pave the road. And, right, and to Rich's point, right, we don't. I've been, it's work that we try to work in when we've got, obviously, if I'm looking at, you know, what Evan brought up. Versus preparing the petitions for, where you're not for Peterson Ranch to get paid, it's like, that's existential, right? That got put, uh, in front of the Peterson Ranch stuff, but one of the reasons why. We help with the preparation is A, we want to make sure that it's done right, so that there isn't a, a problem with the law. And B, right, to, to put it all over onto the applicant, they would be paying. Lots in legal fees, and so because we have some root rootization, but we do have a fiscal policy. In place that I think is a, it's a relatively modest fee, I think it's what, like? Two grand for an application fee for a new benefit district?
Depends on the district, but around.
Yeah, around that, and so that's one thing that was implemented, does that compensate for all of our time? Happens now, it doesn't even come close, but at least it, at least it has some offset for the organization.
Make sure they're serious.
Make sure. That was the other thing I was just gonna point out, make sure they're serious, and just don't spend a lot of time on something that's they're not really serious about.
Yeah, and so there's, but there's an awful lot of, there's an awful lot of work with that. That will be, uh, that will be, I'm sure, coming forward.
Congratulations, John.
Yeah, I forgot about Peterson Ranch.
Two hands now.
Pretty soon I'll take my shoes off.
Morning, Dan, morning, Kalen, how you doing?
Good, good.
Hey, Brian. We have chocolate here, it's up to you. It is literally six to one, half dozen the others. I haven't been up a couple of works in. Couple, few weeks, so you wanna do that?
Yeah.
Let's meet up there.
Did you have some other meeting out there this morning?
We have, um, K R W A doing backflow prevention.
I just noticed the parking lots were full when I came by this morning.
I'd be good to have a, um. I've operated backhoe properly with infrastructure classes.
But then for the back.
Had a backflow problem at a law enforcement center at one time. And that was before your time, the really big one.
Kind of a bell, not being correct.
You ready for me?
Yeah, we do have the motion, uh, we'll go ahead and move that, so we recess as the Board of County Commission and reconvene as the Board of County Health.
I would second that.
Been moving second into recess as the Board of County Commission and convene as the Board of Health, all in favor?
Good morning, uh, Kalen Speth, WIC Supervisor, I am here to request to fill our WIC clerk position. Uh, the position became vacant as of February four, it is supervised by the WIC Supervisor. We have the two Fulton clinics, Manhattan and Fort Riley, and we oversee Potawatomi County. This clerk would work primarily out, uh, the Manhattan office with rotation out to Fort Riley monthly or more as needed. Uh, and the position descriptions attached, they'll assist in providing direct services to WIC clients, maintaining accountability for the office. Data entry, answering phones, scheduling, um, assessing eligibility for our WIC clients. This position's already budgeted in the current fiscal year and next fiscal year, um, so there's no fiscal impact. Recommendation is to approve the hiring process.
Okay, well, I would make a motion to approve the hiring process to fill the position of a full-time work.
I'll second.
And move in second to approve the hiring process to fill position of full-time WIC work. All favors.
All three send please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All these do.
Vivian's old Vivian's solar height.
I'll never forget, as an eight-year-old boy, we'll go traveling and attending my mom's first argument in front of the Kansas Supreme Court. And she had to stand on a box.
Your mom short?
Yeah, she's five foot three, and so she had to, and they made it like, so you need to be about five eight to see. Be over it, so they had a box for her, and I'm like, this is hilarious, you know, it was.
Did she win the argument?
Didn't she do?
Small but mighty.
She's small but mighty, oh my gosh.
I could see that.
She's, yeah, she's cool. You guys have no idea. No idea.
Tough when, when your mom regardless.
Yeah, for sure, there's no doubt, moms are tough.
Well, I say I would make the motion to recess as the Board of County Health and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners.
Second.
We moved in second into recess, the Board of Health and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners, so in favor?
One thing, are you meeting with the Rural Economic Development Committee in March?
Probably, I don't have it on my schedule.
Okay, so I wanted to see if I can flip with you, because I'm supposed to in April, but I just took over as Chair of the M P O and. We meet during the exact same time, but we're not gonna meet in March, so.
Okay, yeah, that's fine, because I didn't have it on my schedule.
March, um. The Wednesday, I think it's the nineteenth.
Nineteenth.
It's the third Wednesday.
Third Wednesday?
Yeah, it would be the nineteenth, I think, at three.
Third, third Friday.
Wednesday.
Okay, Wednesday be the sixteen.
April.
March.
Oh, you want.
I need March.
Oh, you, yeah.
I was gonna go April, but we're gonna meet in April, and we're not meeting in P O of March, so I was gonna flip to do that.
Okay, I was just looking at April.
Uh, April, yeah, you would be right on that, it'd be the sixteen, yeah. But don't worry, I'll, I'll email Amanda and make the, make the change.
And what time is that?
Three o'clock, I believe.
Yeah.
I appreciate that, I, um, it's an E P O overlaps with that at three thirty, and it'd just be impossible to do at this point, so. Okay, I'll let Amanda know that we're switching. And that'll work, okay, that's all.
Okay, great.
March is filling in pretty quick already. Well, um, as you're aware, I won't be here Monday, I'll be zooming in someplace in DC, I don't know where yet, but I'll be here.
How, how am I safe?
Yeah, that first part in particular.
I don't even wanna fly to it right now.
That's two days. You've been, haven't you?
Yeah, we've been.
I never have. I might get a chance to go next June. Don't know if it's gonna be a shepherding for the high school or something, so. Sponsor to go with him, so.
And we'll make the most of it while they're there, so.
Yeah, it's a good place to live, there's so many things to see and do.
Do have meetings on Tuesday, Wednesday, or Monday and Tuesday next week with Senators Moran and Marshall and Congressmen's. Man and Schmack, so.
Or the big city aspect, it's not my jam, but there's so much history and stuff, it's a bucket list thing, kinda.
Well, I had, it's really easy to get there. Subway is really, I mean, it's clean. Efficient, and that. Maps show you where you want it, it was, I was, first time we went, they said, oh yeah, you won't have any trouble using subway, and I go. Really? But we went down and kind of stood in the lobby of this first one for a while, reading everything, figuring it all out, and then.
That's good to know.
The metro, when it's not under construction, it's not too bad either, but it seems to always be under construction, so. Me, I just can't, whereas everybody's got a Tesla in there, so it must pay well.
My daughter and her husband lived there for ten years, so I, I probably went twice a year for a while, and I go to all the, all the. Well, I would, um, make a motion to adjourn the February twenty-seventh meeting of the Board of Ground, Jerry Wishes.
Second.
And moving second to adjourn, February twenty-seventh meeting, Alexander Commission, all of their.